That know their job extremely well and know have a history and understand that when you start to see things, they can take proactive. They like to stay ahead of the event. Instead of reacting to the event, they stay a step ahead of the event. So they're in a proactive posture all the time, which is really big, great benefit for the community itself.
Yeah. Overall, just a reminder to we're getting ready, you get ready, be safe.
Absolutely. Be prepared, stay safe, and stay communicating with everybody to let them know what you're going to do, where you're going to be, and how you're going to handle it, and we'll be ready.
Expected to be another pretty active season.
Probably going to be, yes.
It only takes one.
Yes, only one, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time. Thanks for tuning in, and get ready.
This is the first 1,000 days mural. I'm a figurative artist. That's what I like to do the most is people. And to me, any age is wonderful to do, but something about a baby. It's about nurturing love for the pregnant woman. For the new infant, and then as the baby grows and develops, and the mother's caring for the baby. This is actually closer to three stories.
It's beautiful. It's so joyous. It's so fun. There is so much development that goes on in that period of time that, yes, it's vitally important that we get this out to everybody. Those first 1,000 days sets the lifetime for the child. We have such a young community, so many families within 12,000 schoolchildren. It's perfect within our community.
Being able to, you know, have everyone come by and see it and everything, it's, you know, it's an honor to be able to do it, and I'm just glad we were chosen. A lot of positive, a lot of people stopping by, really seeing how how it's coming along and what a great job the artist has done more than, you know, than what anyone would expect. It just looks awesome.
We hope families will enjoy the mural in Northport. Its vibrant colors and a sense of possibility that inspires. At Gulf Coast, we are so proud to sponsor the mural in Northport and to use the Haddon Memorial Endowment Fund, knowing that it is dedicated to improving the quality of life for residents in Northport.
It literally takes a whole community to raise a baby. It can be tough for families with many resources. The first 1,000 days is working to ensure equal opportunity of support and resources for all young families in our community. Really want to give a big shout out without the foresight of Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation. This wouldn't have been possible to launch first 1,000 days. We have had robust support from other philanthropy organizations, including Sarasota Memorial Hospital Foundation, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, the Selby Foundation, as well as Flansor Trust, and many individual donors.
All of the other businesses and organizations donating paint and supplies is just heartwarming.
We invite everyone who goes to see the mural to go home and create a sidewalk chalk mural of your own. Get out that chalk and enjoy coloring our community with the images of healthy child development.
It's a great message. That's the number one thing is that the that's what people always keep remarking is it is so upbeat and it's, you know, it's easy to just feel the well-being and the joy, which is what, you know, they want to bring to everybody. I'm just really happy it's turned out really well.
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Taylor with the city of Northport, and we want to tell you about some big improvements to our North Report app. It's a great tool to get a lot of information from the city, but also a great tool to give some. For instance, we're right here. We have this tree that's overhanging the roadway here,
and I call the city commissioners, commission special meeting to order.
blocking this street sign. If you have our app, alls you have to do is take a quick picture.
Commissioner President R., Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emrich, Vice Mayor
It'll map it for us and send it right to the right person who will fix it.
Langdon, and Commissioner Luke is here. There is a quorum present for this meeting. Also
So we're going to report an issue.
present are City Manager Fletcher, Assistant City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Taylor, Recording
Look for the type of incident that it is. Pre-vegetation, road obstruction. Take the photo. You can see that the tree is right in front of that sign.
Secretary Baker, Police Chief Garrison, and Fire Chief Titus. I am calling on Assistant
Click on it.
City Attorney Golan to help us with the pledge, please.
Use the photo. Put a little note. Tree.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which
In front of sign. You can post anonymously or as yourself. Submit. Complete. That's simple. Goes right
it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
to all the right people. You don't have to call, figure out who you need to deal with. And then there's a list. You can come back and check. Everybody else can see that it's
Right. I'd be looking for an approval of the agenda.
been submitted, so they know that their neighbor's already done it. It goes right to them.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
None.
And none in house, Vice Mayor? Nope.
None.
Okay, moving on to general business, discussion of possible action regarding priority ranking of Surtax for projects by the city commission and submission to Sarasota County in February 2022. City Manager, will you take the lead on this, sir?
Absolutely. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today, we are here to discuss the Surtax project rankings for the years of 25 through 39. This is a 15-year-long process, but what we are going to do is propose to you a ranking of the projects that we have gathered, whether they be through department, department head, submitted, or citizen requests, or other items that have been sort of carried on from the past. Today, we do have all the projects ranked. We do have the amount of our projected revenue from the Surtax included in the rankings. There is also a deficit of approximately $200 or so million dollars that we will also need to sort of have. What is the plan for the alternative funding for those items brought back in the very near future as we come back to the board? Because we do want to ensure that whether they're impact fees, bonds, or revenue districts, whatever the other options are, we're going to have to continue to do some of the work that is not included in the Surtax amount that we're going to discuss today. So after today, after we have the discussion, our goal is to meet with you all one-on-one at various times over the course of the next six weeks, so that we can hear your individual feedback from this meeting, from your views on how to prioritize, and your questions to get answered, and to make sure that we sort of get to a point of your consensus. And then what staff will do is that we will compile that information and bring it back to the board prior to your next meeting, which would be the one that you would sign off on, on the on the items prior to them being submitted to Sarasota County. So today, we have our Finance Director, Kimberly Williams, as well as her staff, which I'm sure she will introduce as we get going here. But we thank you for the information that you received, and we hope that it was easily understandable, so we can begin to answer your question and go through the process.
Good morning, Kimberly Williams, Finance Director, and I have with me Tiffany and Lisa. Lisa's in our budget office, and Tiffany is an accountant three that also does our Surtax, our CIP and Surtax budgets. Okay, so just a little bit about how we got here this morning. You have a couple of attachments, actually, three attachments. The first of which is your Surtax title, Surtax for Project Requests. These are the original submissions from department heads. They have not been changed since the submission. They're in this packet. They start on page three. So you can see the first, page one is a calendar. Page two is the criteria that was used to prioritize projects. And then the details that were submitted by departments are start on page three. Now, we took these. We developed the prioritization criteria. We sent that out to department directors. They went through the process and prioritized their projects within their department, sent those back to the city manager. There's been two meetings since then with city manager staff, the second one including all department directors, to work on those and come up with this recommended list. This does not have the prioritize prioritization number on this list. This is a it made it in the list, or it didn't. And what we did is because we had too many requests to fund in Surtax, we moved what we needed to the alternative funding column, and that could be impact fees. That could be other district revenues. That could be grant revenue. That could be bonding of a project. That could be any other source. But we said, here's how much we can afford. And all five, the first five years of Surtax, the second five years, the third five years, we left enough to use the all of the projected revenues at this time. And this is what we'll, after this meeting and the one in February, we'll need to submit just a list with the detail sheets that will at that time be reconciled to what our final
Good morning.
list is. It won't be prioritized, meaning it won't have a number. This is our top
Try that again. Good morning.
project. It will just be, here are all our projects we plan to fund with our total projected
Good morning.
Hey, it's Monday, January 3rd, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. We are in the city chambers,
revenue. And let's see if I left anything out. So the details, the original submissions were your first attachment, and then the these legal pages are your second attachment. Most of this relates to the the current list as we've gone through these multiple meetings and prioritizations. The piece that in the back is actually citizen submissions. Those have not been changed since they were submitted. It was just better on legal form, legal paper. That's how it ended up in this attachment for those. We took citizen submissions and we sent them back out to the department directors and said, hey, are any of these, do you want to add them into your Surtax requests? We did have one police department one that was added, and many of them, you can see, were already in planning stages. And you can see by the second column to the right, second column from the end on the right, you can see all the yeses, or something a citizen submitted, and we already have a project or in the planning phases for that. And I think that is all I wanted to point out. Let me make sure. Yes. So so we're here to say today to say, you know, we want to start developing this list that we'll submit at the end of February to the county of the projects we plan to fund.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Luke, please.
First of all, I'd like to say that job well done. The way that this was presented, of course, I wasn't here the last time this was presented, but great strategy, great planning put in this to get us to where we need to be for the county. Love it that we do not prioritize these, because that's what we do yearly at budget within our city. It should not be prioritized going out to the county. So really appreciate that point. I do have a couple of questions. For the under the page three, the top one, for police, that storage building, can that be located at the same property as the the other building that they're talking about? Wondering if they had any idea of location for that.
What page? I'm sorry?
Page three. No, the other one. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Which line were you speaking?
The very, the very top one, eight. Eight. It's the storage building. So I was wondering if you were thinking of the same location as the EOC and property evidence and stuff like that.
That's the fire department's storage.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It is fire. Just switch chiefs.
Scott Titus for the Fire Rescue District. That storage building is going to be for some of our overflow from logistics that we have now, but also spare apparatus. So most efficiently, the reason we proposed Station 85 is we have that property there, but that apparatus can then still be checked every day, make sure that it's in working order onsite at a fire station. So if we need to put it back in service quickly, we can do so.
So the location you're thinking of is out at Station 85?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, my next question is 11, which is IT. And I don't know, is IT needs to come forward? Maybe somebody can answer it. Would this phone system, would that enable us to have a better call center? That one-stop-shop type of call center that we've been speaking of having, would this phone system help to enable that to be brought about within the city?
I see Julie on the move, but as she comes down here, I think that they are separate. This is one, this phone system is directly related to the ones that are in our offices. But I would say that there has to be a connection. When you start talking about improving the quality of how calls are taken in, you know, from the externally to internally, there must be a benefit there to allow that to happen. But I can tell you, the intention of this was a separate item from our customer care efforts. Julian?
Juliana Bulea, Assistant City Manager. City Manager Fletcher is correct. This is for the internal phone system. As we progress with our call center, that will require a certain type of software, which IT is presently looking at. That'll be kind of phased in. But this is, this is a separate item. This is for the internal phone system. It will help, it will help when we transmit the calls.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say, because your routing in that has to be set up within your system in order to enable that citywide type.
Yes, ma'am.
So it needs to be compatible. I don't want to see, what was that thing, Commissioner McDowell? Tracker or whatever, whatever that name was. I would like to see that system be able to make it possible without, oops, you know, we ordered the wrong thing. So, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We will make sure that this will definitely help the routing, and that when we do obtain the software for the call center later, it will be properly integrated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question is within Parks and Rec. And Parks and Rec stuff was worded a little different. So it kind of, it took me a little bit thinking that they're saying they don't need any money because it's in the CIP. But I don't think that's what was intended. I think it was intended that it's already in there, that we need the money. This is where we want the money from. I'm hoping is what was being said.
The amount that you're requesting from this Surtax.
Right. Okay, so it is the funding source that you're pinpointing for those projects.
Right.
Okay, thank you. On 22, please don't leave a second. On 22, the additional baseball fields. There is a good talk about a regional park going in on River Road with the county and Welland Park and us. And I don't see any way that we aren't going to be asked to put in some money toward that. I can just about assure you that hands are going to be stuck out. that we'll submit at the end of February to the county of the projects we plan to fund.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner questions. Commissioner Lu, please.
First of all, I'd like to say that job well done. The way that this was presented, of course, I wasn't here the last time this was presented, but great strategy, great planning put in this to get us to where we need to be for the county. Love it that we do not prioritize these because that's what we do yearly at budget within our city. It should not be prioritized going out to the county. So really appreciate that point. I do have a couple of questions. For the, under the page three, the top one, for police, that storage building, can that be located at the same property as the, the other building that they're talking about? Wondering if they had any idea of location for that.
What page, I'm sorry?
Page three.
Yes, yes.
No, the other one. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Which line were you, were you speaking?
The very, the very top one, eight. Eight is the storage building. So I was wondering if you were thinking of the same location as the EOC and property evidence and stuff like that.
That's the fire department's storage.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It is fire. Just switch chiefs.
Scott Titus for the Fire Rescue District. That storage building is going to be for some of our overflow from logistics that we have now, but also a spare apparatus. So most efficiently, the reason we proposed Station 85 is we have that property there, but that apparatus can then still be checked every day to make sure that it's in working order onsite at a fire station. So if we need to put it back in service quickly, we can do so.
So the location you're thinking of is out at Station 85?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. My next question is 11, which is IT. And I don't know, is IT needs to come forward? Maybe somebody can answer it. Would this phone system, would that enable us to have a better call center? That one-stop shop type of call center that we've been speaking of having? Would this phone system help to enable that to be brought about within the city?
I see Julie on the move, but as she comes down here, I think that they are separate. This is one, this phone system is directly related to the ones that are in our offices. But I would say that there has to be a connection. When you start talking about improving the quality of how calls are taken in, you know, from the, from externally to internally, there must be a benefit there to allow that to happen. But I can tell you, the intention of this was a separate item from our customer care efforts. Julie?
Juliana Bulea, Assistant City Manager. City Manager Fletcher is correct. This is for the internal phone system. As we progress with our call center, that will require a certain type of software, which IT is presently looking at. That'll be kind of phased in. But this is, this is a separate item. This is for the internal phone system. It will help, it will help when we transmit the calls.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. Because your routing in that has to be set up within your system in order to enable that citywide type.
Yes, ma'am.
So it needs to be compatible. I don't want to see, what was that thing? Commissioner McDowell? Tracker or whatever, whatever that name was. I would like to see that system be able to make it possible without, oops, you know, we, we ordered the wrong thing.
Yes, ma'am. We will make sure that, this will definitely help the routing. And that when we do obtain the software for the call center later, it will be properly integrated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question is within Parks and Rec. And Parks and Rec stuff was worded a little different. So it kind of, it took me a little bit thinking that they're saying they don't need any money because it's in the CIP. But I don't think that's what was intended. I think it was intended that it's already in there, that we need the money. This is where we want the money from. I'm hoping is what was being said.
Good morning. Sandra Fundler, Parks and Recreation Director. I think you're talking about the park amenities, which is the annual place of plan. We were just noting that it's been in there every year. And that amount is sufficient to serve the parks each year.
The amount that you're requesting from this SRTAX?
Right.
Okay. So it is the funding source that you're pinpointing for those projects?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. On 22, please don't leave a second. On 22, the additional baseball fields. There is a good talk about a regional park going in on River Road with the county and Welland Park and us. And I don't see any way that we aren't going to be asked to put in some money toward that. I can just about assure you that hands are going to be stuck out. So if that is the case and they want us to help any funding, does this line item cover that? Because I want to make sure we have something in there stating that, yes, we can use SRTAX in order to help this regional park come off the ground.
And Commissioner Lu, from my conversation, even with County Administrator Lewis, as well as Welland Park leadership, that amount that we would be potentially paying has yet to be determined. And my only concern about putting it into SRTAX would be the timing of it. I feel like we might need the funding before we get to the 25 to 29 years, especially at the rate that they're moving. So unless I'm being told differently, we may have to find another form of funding as opposed to SRTAX when we do find out that fight's done.
And, and I have no problem with your statements. But if it's not in there, if you don't have that placeholder, it might be after 24 that they are wanting us to put something in. I mean, that's only two years away. So I would hate to take away the avenue of funding. Just because it's set in there doesn't mean that you're definitely going to do it. But it does mean that you can utilize the money for that. So I would rather know that something can go for that in later years if needed. Even if they didn't need anything right off the bat. Say they got grant funding and could put it in all themselves. In 25, they might want to expand it and put in covered pickleball or something and want us to help out. So with knowing that a regional park is coming, I think we need to prepare ourselves at least putting that avenue of revenue in place.
Understood. We will.
So would 22 do that? Or is that another item that would need to be added?
It would be a new item. 22 would not cover it from what I'm reading, unless you guys are, okay?
Okay. Thank you. As long as we're on that topic, please, please don't leave. But as long as we're talking about putting something in, I feel the same way about the annexation or the annex building out in Welland Park. I know we are trying to establish that building out there as quickly as possible before 2024. But again, if something comes along and slows us down and we want that avenue in 25 or 26 to put some more money toward that annex building, that public building out in Welland Park, I would like to see that added to it also. Doesn't mean that we're putting it off to that point. But it means that if it is put off to that point, we can utilize SRTAX money for it.
And if I'm not mistaken, Assistant City Manager Yorberl has been talking about a different funding source for that particular project. And it, it again would fall outside of SRTAX. The only issue with, now, if we take these two new projects and add them in, then based on the funding levels that we have, it would push something either down and out to the out years. So there's that consideration just to be mindful of as we add to the first tranche of SRTAX funds.
Understood, sir. But we already know that there is a deficit. And you're going to have to find other resources anyhow. But if something moves us to move quickly on something, we have to be able to utilize the SRTAX if, for some reason, it becomes that number one priority at that point in time.
Okay.
And, and I understand that means something else isn't going to get as much. But to me, it's better to put it down that you could use it if necessary.
And do we have a proposed location for the funding of?
Yes, sir. We have various spots. We're looking at general government revenues. We're looking at, I think, one and a half or $2 million of the SRTAX in the current. We're about $2 million deficit. We're having conversations right now with the improvement district and the developer about some gap funding, maybe some lease purchase options that, that would carry for a few years. And then we'd eventually turn over it. Ownership would be turned over to us. Jason Yorberl, by the way, Assistant City Manager. So we have about $2 million hole right now in our funding source. And we're working with the developer and the improvement district to fill that hole in some creative manner.
Can you remind me what the timing is of building, then building?
If I'm not mistaken, the post-annexation agreement calls for a design, then two years of the property being transferred to us. And that hasn't happened yet, I don't believe. Then we have another two or three years after that to build the building, if I remember right. So right now, the clock hasn't ticked until that property is legally transferred over to us.
But we're still about $2 million short on it.
We are not $2 million short. Absolutely.
Food for thought for staff. I just don't want to see us fall short of having that public service building out there. All right. Back to Park and Rec, line 26. Would you consider that band shell out at Warm Meryl Springs in that 62 acres? Because I believe that was part of our master plan, that that amphitheater band shell be located there.
That was not intended for Warm Meryl Springs. It was just part of the master plan is putting it out near the front green area and developing that. It could be there. I think it depends on what we decide to do with the future phases of Warm Meryl Springs. But this is not intended for that site.
But it could be if that's where it was chosen to be.
It could be.
Okay. Thank you. Same thing with line 28. I was thinking about that county complex, but we've already said that that needs to be a separate item. That is all for Park and Rec. Thank you, ma'am. I do have one for the police. And this is just a question because on line 33, they stated that there would be a second floor. Is there a rule that 911 dispatch has to be on a second floor?
No, there's no rule.
I mean, I, I worked in that field and we were on second floor with closed windows because of security. So I didn't know if there was a rule. Can you explain to me why you're talking about two floors then? Because the cost of elevators and everything is very expensive to maintain.
Because it is best practice. It's recommended to go to the second floor due to the flooding and stuff like that. But there's not a mandatory rule that would require it. It's recommended.
Okay. That's, that clears it up. I wondered if it were for that reason. All right. And I think that is all. I thought some of the citizens' input was good. Glad to see most of them were addressed already. Some of them, there's no way we can do. It's not our position to take care of them. But I'm, I'm sure I'm at my 10-minute mark. So I'll yield the floor and have a second round later. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah. I have to tell you, I, I'm not going through this before. And I'm sure there isn't very many staff that have been here for the full 15 years since we've done this in the same capacity that they are today, except for maybe Ms. Julie. I'm really impressed with the detail that staff came up with. And I'm equally impressed with the citizens' suggestions. Some of their suggestions, I'm really glad to see we've already got it started. That, that ball has already started rolling. But some of their ideas and suggestions were, were pretty cool. So I'm very grateful for their input. I do have a couple of questions. When I compare this booklet to this, the numbers aren't jiving. Right. And, and I'll give you a couple of examples. Maybe by the time we get to the second round of discussions, they'll be a little bit more accurate. For example, when you look at the phone system, it says zero for SRTAX on the legal sheets, but then 1.5 million in other funding. But when you're in here, it's all listed as SRTAX.
Correct. These are as it was originally requested from departments during that series of meetings. These were originally submitted. We had this huge deficit. We said, how, these are all important things. We need to do them. How are we going to fund them? So we took enough and moved to alternative funding, funding to balance all five years. So that 1.5 was moved to alternative funding. And that may be, it comes back as a part of the regular budget request. And we meet that need with either general fund revenues. I can't think of, it wouldn't be an impact. Yeah. Some other grant, any other source of funding, not SRTAX. So what that tells you is that project was pulled out of our SRTAX list. It can be put back in if that's your, your direction. But it is now an alternative funding source, it's not in SRTAX four.
So this book is what they originally requested to be used as SRTAX?
Correct.
And this booklet is, and this legal sheets is what, is the final request? Is this?
Yes.
For example, a little example and context. So in what we originally received from our interested parties, the first tranche of funding is 85 million. The first actual project total was like 113 or 130 million. There was a huge deficit. So it was our job to come back and then prioritize their rankings into a ranking that would be fiscally attainable. Now, some of them, you will see as we start talking about what was in the original book, we do believe that we can handle through other alternative sources. It's just going to take the will of the board and the actions of the staff in order to get there.
That explained a lot. I, I saw the original submissions and I saw this. I didn't realize the, the difference. So thank you for reiterating that. So when I looked at what we did in the past, and we were very specific, I see projects that were not done. And I see dollar amounts that came in considerably less than what was projected on the ordinance or considerably more that came in underneath the budget. So I'm curious, why are we including dollar amounts for a specific project?
Because that's our task from the county to, hey, here's all your projected revenues. And those projected revenues come from the county. And then it is our task to say, here is what we would fund with every dollar of that. They recommended not leaving any reserve to fund projects up to that entire dollar amount because obviously we're 15 years in advance. So those, those are going to change. So our task is to say, here is every project we will fund with our projected revenues for 15 years.
So if it comes in, so if the request was for $4 million in the referendum, but when we go to do the project, let's say it's $10 million, are we only allowed to use that $4 million in SRTAX? Or can we use the full $10 million in SRTAX even though that's not what was in the original ordinance?
We're only allowed to use what revenues come in. So that is our task every year during the budget process to relook at, hey, okay, our projections 15 years ago were this amount. There now $10 million more. Let's reprioritize. But our projects are coming in at more. So we're adjusting that every year through the regular budget process to projected revenues are different and the cost of projects are different.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Do you know how much we received as an estimate in SRTAX funding over the past 15 years? How much we actually received? Because I know that they're saying that it's projected to receive. They said 145 million was projected 15 years ago. Do we know how much that actual dollar amount is?
Lisa's pulling that right now.
Thank you so much. One of my last questions is, do we have to be specific or can we be broad in our priorities? Is it better to be specific or is it better to be broad?
I think that we wouldn't want to be overly broad because this is what we're going to tell the citizens. You know, if this is voted in, if we receive, you know, their SRTAX passes, these are the things we'll be spending the money on. Could we say road rehabilitation? Yes. And that could include a lot of different areas. But I don't think we want to just say a category. We need to give a detail. We have to submit a detail sheet for every project to the county. So once this list, our approved list is finalized, we'll take it and reconcile it to this and make sure all the numbers now match. And we have to submit this to the county by the end of February.
From, for SRTAX three, from 9/10 till close of last year, 2021, we've received $102,340,000.
So we received $102 million in SRTAX up until when?
September 30th, this is past year.
Wow. So we're under what was projected, not over.
We have three more years.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. Because SRTAX four doesn't start until January 1/25.
I, I actually was thinking it would be a much higher because of the growth that we've experienced and, and the tourism and the spending and stuff in the county. So thank you for that number. That was very informative. My last question. And I, I don't, I know that SRTAX is for infrastructure. Is there a way to use SRTAX funding to help with affordable housing?
Not for a program to assist with rent. For the infrastructure related to that certainly.
That's where I was thinking was more, you know, how we give tax credits for a developer to develop affordable housing. We, we, the city put in $50,000 for Palm Port. Can we have a category for something like that in SRTAX for affordable housing?
I would want to look at that in detail because if you're talking about building and apartment building, I'm not sure that will be seen as a public facility.
Gotcha. It has to be a public facility.
It was something to facilitate that, the, the city team, the ministry of office, the, something like that I could see. But anything like that, I'd really like to research in detail.
Okay. So Mayor, I'm almost finished. If I could have just a little latitude, because I think I'm at my 10-minute mark because it's on the same subject. Does the county have a housing authority? I come from Chicago. There's the Chicago Housing Authority, Chicago City. They do housing that they're in charge of. Obviously, the city of Northport is not as large as Chicago. But I'm curious, does Sarasota County have a housing authority where they build housing, affordable housing?
I don't know that.
That we could possibly use and allocate some of our SRTAX for that? So as long as it's built here in Northport?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anybody from social services would.
Maybe that's going to require a lot more research. And if it's possible, I, I would like to see something added into this. If, if the county does something like that, I don't know.
Okay.
And we'll research that, will you?
Thank you. And I yield, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner White?
Okay. Good questions. And again, I want to welcome all my fellow commissioners and everybody up your back. It's been a long time. So glad to see everybody. I, going back to, this begins in 2025. And I think this is along the lines of what Commissioner McDowell asked. But I don't think I understand the answer. When in, it says fiscal year 2529, I'm looking at the Price Boulevard widening project, page 43. It has the full amount in that first section. So however, on, on our sheets here, it's, it's split up. Can you explain that again? Why, why that is like that?
There wasn't enough funding in the first five years to cover that project and do much else? So it was either let's do this project and very little else in those first five years or move it to the second five-year period where there was enough funding to do it. So with this, if it is something that is going to be done before the second five-year period, it would need to be bonded or some other alternative source.
All right. So these separate pages, they, they just list what the total and. So these separate pages, they, they just list what the total amount is. If we want to throw all of our eggs in that one basket, this is what it would be. Whereas this has it broken down, how it can really reasonably be, reasonably be done. Is that, do I have that right?
That is exactly correct, ma'am. Because what, what we did was knowing how valuable widening of price is, we couldn't leave it off the list, but we couldn't actually put it in that first tranche, which has 85 million. It would literally be like almost half of that. And we'd have to make some serious adjustments. But of course, if that's what you come back and you say, then that's what we do. But it was our sort of recommendation to phase it in this way. But we share the priority of widening price.
Okay. And my other question is, this, these, um, project allotments, how they're set up, they can still be shuffled around, correct?
Absolutely.
As things come up, right? Um, because again, I was just focusing on the Price Boulevard widening and I, I can't believe that it, we have to wait even to 2025 to even get started with that project. And, um, but there is that option that we can move money to get more into that first, you know, pocket, right? To get, to get going further. Okay. Right. And things can also be added to this, right? Because I'm thinking like the Brave Stadium, that wasn't even on our radar 15 years ago, but we did, the city did. So things could be added to, to this list as we go along. It's kind of like fluid. We can shuffle things around. Okay. I also had a question about the citizen submissions. I found them really interesting. And I, I couldn't help but note how many of them centered around, um, you know, our, our natural amenities, how people want to see green space, parks, dog parks, anything that has to do with being outdoors. I mean, that is why we're, we're in Florida. That's what they want to see. So, uh, do we have any kind of a, a, a system to, um, discuss some of these? I mean, I, I see the staff comments, but do we have an opportunity to bring some, some of these forward at all or?
Certainly you could do that today, um, in the one-on-ones in between this meeting and the February meeting. Or in the February meeting.
Okay.
So this isn't final until the end of that February meeting and you say, here's what you want us to give to the county as our finalist.
All right. So when we, and I appreciate that city manager, that we are going to have those one-on-ones. And that's when I could say, hey, this is, this idea has come up throughout the years. Can we finally start to, to act on it? Okay.
And what we'll do is we will, um, present sort of a document that says, you know, based on the one-on-ones, here's the feedback from the colleagues and reflective of any changes. And that way everyone knows that before you get back to the dais on February, mid-February.
15.
February 15th. And then you can say yes or no, depending on how you feel about those ones and how the new priority looks like, especially, you know, as Commissioner Luke asked and addressed earlier as well.
Okay. Great. Uh, because I, I really think that's important that we took the time to have these meetings and people took the time to fill this out and not just to say, well, like I see yes or no, uh, no, to actually have given them the respect to, to move these forward and that it is continual. So even if they don't make the cut initially, they can still be brought back. I'm hoping that we can get some kind of an avenue because there never has been that before. Uh, when people submitted these ideas now, you know, if one of us bring, wants to bring it forward, okay, but what if, you know, this is for 15 years, this, this thing, this is not going to come around for another 15 years. So if there's something else, say, okay, let's, can we talk about this now? Is there always going to be that opportunity to bring some of these back?
Well, actually, we, we want to do a little bit better than that. Once, once this ranking gets, you know, signed off on, there's still $200 million of things that we need to be done that's not going to be in here. And then we've got to come back with some alternative solutions to say how and when we expect to get the other things done so that they just don't fall, you know, fall, fall off of our areas of concern. So that's another thing that staff is working on.
Okay. Great. Because again, some of these things saying, is the project already in the planning process? And it says, yes, but you know, what if the years go by and I'm wondering, where, where is it? Is it, was it taken off the, you know, the to-do list or whatever to have that, that in place? Um, because I know city manager, we've had these discussions that, that like Charlotte County has a, has a whole big committee that they submit for, for projects. And I just want to make sure that these don't just get shuffled aside. So thank you for that. And I think that's my, my question. So, thank you.
Excuse me.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Langdon.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think I'll go through it this way. Park, I have a few questions for Parks and Rec. With new parks, so I'm looking at the Langley Park Development and, and I have the same question for several of these purchased, um, land for future parks and new parks. If, if a park is new, we could pay for that project through impact fees, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. The splash pads, the second and third splash pads, we currently have one in the city at Atwater?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and your thought for the location of the other splash pads would be?
We have not set a location, but certainly would be spread throughout the city, not close to Atwater, but we have not set those locations. This was a recommendation that came from the Park and Rec Master Plan, but also goes as far back as the aquatics, um, study that they did before we went into the pool and all those things. There was recommendations for splash pads throughout the city.
Um, have you taken a look at how the aquatic center might impact those plans?
We have not looked at that at all yet, but, um, splash pad is not obviously going to make the same impact as, as the aquatic center.
Right.
So these would be small in size, similar to Atwater.
Atwater. Okay. Thanks. Warm Mineral Springs, I, I didn't see any money in here for the trailhead. The, is that going to come from some other source of revenue?
You're talking about the, um, connection to the legacy trail at the back?
Correct.
Um, that would be in the future phases of Warm Mineral Spring. Um, and so we have not had that discussion yet on, on what's going to happen with those future phases.
But shouldn't we project? I mean, I would think of all of our Parks and Rec spending.
I, I believe that's coming up as an agenda item.
Yes. Yes, it is. And that's a, that's a, that's another good point in that, you know, like a similar conversation earlier, we would, we should put it in and then in case there's another funding mechanism, take it out. My only question would be the phase one funding of Warm Mineral Springs, what was the funding source of that? The nine or 10 million?
About half of it was SRTAX.
Half of it was SRTAX?
It was fund balance and impact.
Okay. Yeah. And absolutely, we need to.
Okay. Okay. Good. I just didn't want to overlook that because that's probably one of the top priorities in my mind for Parks and Rec.
And I totally agree. Thank you for bringing that up. That was one of them I had on my list for round two. Definitely need the ability to use SRTAX for the legacy trail, trailheads and stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome. Tennis court and pickleball complex and the regional park out at Wellon Park. What do you think is the timing of the planning for Wellon Park? One of the things I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about is if we spend a significant amount of money building a pickleball park or location in the city and then it's replicated out at Wellon Park. So, because in the conversations I've had, pickleball was sort of one of the things that came up in that regional park location.
I was like, you can answer. I'm sorry. I think I confused you.
I, I think I might defer to Assistant City Manager Yarbo. I have not been involved in a lot of those conversations.
Why?
More of the, of the county with, um, Wellon Park. We were involved in the very beginning with some of the ideas, but I, I'm not sure where it's at at this point.
Yeah. That's an important resource and asset. I would encourage you to get involved and represent the city in those conversations.
Doodle.
Jason Yarbo, Assistant City Manager. The, um, I do, I do remember pickleball as a possible discussion. Another thing I would remind you too, in regards to the Wellon Park is that the city's going to be, if we move forward, you know, one of the largest contributions that we're going to be is our land.
Right.
Which is 63 acres, which is worth millions of dollars. So, um, I'm not saying that we won't be called for financial contribution, but we're already going to be doing the heavy lifting with the land that, that we have in our possession. That will be critical, making that kind of a, uh, sports tourism, um, project happen.
Yeah. It, it's just that it would be redundant and in my mind wasteful to have two pickleball places in proximity to one another when with SRTAX money, we could have spent that money on something else and have that pickleball. So I just want to raise that, um, as a concern.
Don't forget you have a 104 square mile city. You have, you know, huge landmass city. So depending on where you put it, you know?
Yeah.
It, it can literally take you 25 minutes to get across the city.
On a good day.
You know, it's funny, just growing up in an urban environment where it can take you an hour to go 10 miles. It's sort of like 20, 25 miles to engage in your favorite sport is not a showstopper for me. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Let me just, I think I'm, yep, I'm done with Parks and Rec. Quick question for the police department. The shooting range, is that the shoot house that we were talking about during the budget conversations, Chief? Or is that something else?
What page are you on, ma'am?
I jumped ahead a little bit.
It's, uh.
Page 41.
Ma'am, Todd Garrison, Chief of Police, that's separate.
Separate.
Yes.
Okay. It couldn't be together?
No. They're two, they're two different things.
So the shoot house is more things popping up and you have to decide if it's friend or foe and?
No. Uh, the, the shoot house is a smaller environment that, uh, use ammunition rounds and stuff within. This is actually a shooting.
Shooting range.
Right now, we have to go up to Nike's Trail, hey, to use, uh, the facility up there, compete against everybody else that's using the facility.
Okay. So similar. Yep. Yeah. Well, another question for you, the mobile command center replacement. Um, it, can we push that out to the second tranche? Is it, is it in bad, bad shape? How old is it?
Yeah, it's 2007. It's, it's in, um, not great shape.
Okay.
And I just want to say it's extremely outdated. The technology and stuff on it, it's, it's so antiquated.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. That's it. Price Boulevard, um, we've been talking a little bit about our ability to go out to the bond market in 2024 and I might have missed some earlier conversation. I apologize if I have, but is the widening of Price Boulevard probably something that needs to go to bond because of the price tag or at least half of it?
It would make things a lot easier in balancing the SRTAX. I'm not going to lie. You know, we debated and we sort of, um, discussed, you know, the pros and cons of putting it out there, you know, with something that, uh, if it's 2024, you know, the national election will also be that year, you'll get a lot of turnout.
Right.
You're, you're just, the, the campaign, the education, the things that we would need to do would need to be extremely well done to make sure that the value of the project is not minimized at a time where, you know, again, people are doing, doing, um, doing tough in these economic conditions. So our goal was to include it on here in something that was sort of, uh, universally accepted versus a moment. But we are, we're going to have to go out to bonding at some point for something and staff looks forward to sort of working with you and others on figuring out what that is.
Okay. Thank you. I think I'm almost done. The water control structure program, um, these dollars are to continue our current pace of rehabilitation or is it to accelerate our current pace of rehabilitation?
Morning, Commissioner. My name's Garrett. I'm the business manager, Garrett Woods, Business Manager for Public Works. The numbers identified there is for the future reconstruction for the water control structures. We also have upcoming commission meeting, um, to talk about water control structure plan, um, later on in January to go over, uh, some of that more in detail.
Okay.
Okay. Of the overall water control structures. But this is for the, um, reconstruction of our current water control structures and the reconstruction of that.
Yeah. Let me just ask the question a little differently. We've been on a pace to replace one structure and do a plan for a second structure every year. So will these dollars maintain that pace? I'm seeing nods. Oh, yeah.
Yes. So what?
Yeah. Okay. I'll save my call.
Okay.
So later. I have a few more questions, but I think I've exhausted my time. So I'll yield the floor.
We'll be having a second round. Yeah. Um, a lot of good questions. Finance and staff, I think you did a very good job with this presentation. And, uh, my main concern was, again, Price Boulevard and seeing how it was pushed out so far and why we haven't possibly pursued going out to referendum. I think I got a few of my answers just recently about not going out in '22, which is an election year. But my, my thinking was putting out referendum in '22 for half, and then if we're working out on SRTAX, that would take over right when phase one might be completed and moving on to phase two, if we were planning it properly. Has there been any discussions about putting it on '22's referendum to go for bond? I know it's less participation in the vote. I know it's not a national election, but you have people in this town that have voiced their opinion over and over again that price needs widened. We just had the prop, perfect storm the other day with a tanker going down on 75 and a few different wrecks in town that everybody's, you know, they, they just couldn't move through town. What if we were in an emergency state and all that happened? You know, it, it is our responsibility to open up the roadways and get them working. I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I'm talking to the board here and as a city. But this is where we need to prioritize is in the travel lanes, getting people from one side of town to other, when we don't have a secondary route, you know? So I guess my question would be to the city manager, um, has there been any thoughts and discussions on, let's move it up a little bit and get it on referendum and see where it goes, you know?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we did discuss this as an item to move up. The reason why we left it in 2024 as opposed to 2022 was the vote actually on the SRTAX that is going to happen. We didn't want to sort of mix anything with that so that we could sort of message that as, you know, the primary focus of what we want to pass. I do believe in the past, the SRTAX vote has been overwhelmingly positive, which is, which is a great sign towards your argument. And we're happy if this is the will of yourself and the board to put it on '22 at least for half or whatever you advise us to and go from there. But the rationale of staff was just to make sure that it didn't get, you know, added into the SRTAX conversation where people can see a lot at one time and typically use, let that influence their decision. And both of these are very necessary. The SRTAX, you know, is, we're talking, you know, a, a lot of money over the course of the next 15 years. And the widening of price is something that should have been done yesterday. So we're absolutely understanding what you want.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm sure we'll have further discussions on the one-on-ones, on the possibles and this, that and the other, you know, because I just think it is a must that we need to get started on it as soon as possible with whatever direction we need to go. If we need to do all the phases at one time or phase it out, one, two, and three, like we had discussed before, you know? discussed before, you know, from Price to Toledo Blade and then from Glen Allen to Price and then East End, you know, just getting a plan together and knowing what's coming and when. And, you know, it was fully funded before and that money got moved. And now we're sort of holding the bag, trying to get it back again. So it's something, as you said, needed to be done before, and it needs to be done now sooner than later. So I know, Commissioner McDowell, you had a, your finger up for one second?
Light bulb went off.
Uh-oh.
So I understand that, Steph. And if I may, I have an idea about the election. I understand you don't want to do it when we're doing the Surtax, which is in November. I don't know if there's enough time to possibly put it on the election ballot when the school board has theirs in March.
Possible.
I think we would need to educate the public.
Yeah.
There would be a lot of buildup, two-year buildup to properly ensure.
I don't think the public wants to wait two more years. And that's what you're hearing, that's what I'm hearing. And, and.
And just one second, since this is still my floor. I know this is a bigger discussion, and I'd probably like to, that's a great idea to where, if it's possible, to do it at a different election. Because they, they would look at it saying, yes, we can get it done sooner. We're all for it or we're not. But at least we tried, you know. And the citizens up there with the education, if you're looking at March, you got a year to educate, you know.
March is 60 days from now.
No, I wouldn't do it this March. I would say later on. But if we don't have that window, then that's not going to work. I thought you were talking about the March following November.
Right.
Now, this March is too soon for an education process. But this, just think about it for November and see what the pros and cons are for it. Yes, I know they're voting for Surtax, but that's getting money in. The price is getting the work done. Do they want to spend a little bit of money? And it's all going to come down on what it's going to impact them on their taxes. Is it going to be, you know, what did, what did each home pay for the road bond that we just did?
$46.
On the year.
For you.
Right.
So, I mean, when you, when you calculate those numbers per family, it might be worth a 50 bucks if that's what it comes out to, you know. I, I, we just need to have, I don't want to do it today, but just, just put it in the back of your minds that we need to have a bigger discussion about possibly getting it done before 2025.
We'll bring back the proposal that will show how we could do it and the impact of 2022.
What does it cost to put on, on referendum, you know, this, that and the other. And, you know, that, again, we'll bring it up in a meeting, and that'll be the will of the board if we want to go forward with that or not. But that's all I wanted to discuss on this. I was very in, in tune with getting Price Boulevard worked on. So let's go into round two. Commissioner Lu, please.
Thank you very much. I just got a couple of items that I put down that I'm remembering from the past and wondering if it is in there. We have always talked about a dog park over on the East End. So just wondering, I mean, within the next 15 years, we'll probably be wanting to do something like that, I would think. So is that somewhere under Parks and Rec where, and a dog park out east could be done through Surtax?
That project is already in the CIP.
Is it funded in the CIP?
Yes, in future years.
I don't believe there's any money sitting in it, though. I mean, it is a project in the CIP, but I don't believe there's any money.
No, I, let me, let me go, let me go look, if you don't mind, and I'll, I'll come back up. But I'm pretty sure there was funding in out years for the new dog park out by Toledo Blade.
Okay, in those out years, though, is it coming from IMPACT or is it coming from Surtax? Because if you don't have it listed in this, you shouldn't be using this money for it. So curious about that. If you'll look that up, I'd appreciate it, please. Something that is small in my categories that we've talked about in the past, and that is the holiday decorations and the Braves banners going up on 41 on the poles and stuff. I know that's small, but I don't want us to forget that item, that for years we've been talking about. Same thing with a welcome sign to the city coming in from the Charlotte County area. We've talked about that for years and years, and we don't want to forget that welcome sign either. So those are some items that I wanted to remind us of. Go ahead.
It's in 2026, and it's funded through IMPACT fees.
Totally, through IMPACT fee. Okay, thank you very much. All right, I am done, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Yeah, I just wanted to share some thoughts with, with the board since this is their only opportunity. And Mayor, I do appreciate all your comments about Price Boulevard. Yeah, that is a, a safety issue. And also, it, it's something that goes, that creates other problems. We turn, we talked about having to do a traffic light at Toledo Blade and 75 because of the backup. But I know that, that between Sumter and Toledo Blade on 75 has become our east-west way that we travel. I know I avoid Price, especially on Fridays, because that's, that's garbage day for Price Boulevard. Sorry, solid waste, but that's, that's the reality, you know. So it just creates all these other problems. So, and it is a safety concern. So when we're talking about, you know, funding our police and fire, yes, yes, they do need to be funded. But this is create, this is a safe, a major safety issue. So whatever we have to do to get, to get that rolling along, I think it's, it's great. And having a special election, I mean, I think that could be thrown out there also for discussion. We don't have to piggyback off of an election that's already been scheduled, like the school board elections. I know it would cost money for us to do our own election, but that's actually what, what funded this city hall. Who remembers that? That was, that was a special election in August, yes. All of 1,200 people voted for the, the money, the bond or something that we did to build this whole complex. So, you know, we did that for a city hall. We can certainly do that for, for Price Boulevard. It's just to throw that out there. And also the regional park, I'm, I'm not in favor of throwing all of our eggs in that basket, that everything that, that we'd like to see in Northport is going to be the regional park, as Commissioner Langdon said. You have to get in your car and drive there. Plus, it's a regional park. It's going to be servicing not just us here in Northport, but everybody is going to go there. And when I'm looking at the citizens' comments, you see their addresses. They're, they're all people pretty much who live in this part of Northport, that we really need to have things here that we can walk to, we can ride a bike to. If we're going to be serious about mobility, being able to get around the city without having to get in your car and drive there, then we have to be serious about putting these amenities in, in areas where people can, can really walk there or ride a bike there or don't have to go on, on highways to get to. So Regional Park, if, if it ever comes to fruition, yes, it's, it's going to be a great amenity. But I don't think we should put everything there and that, what people are suggesting. Yeah, but even that is, is needed here. We only have one set of pickleboard, I'm not a pickle court person, but I'm sorry.
I'm waiting for the congresssters to get going.
I'm not a pickle person. But don't we just have one set of courts at Highland?
Island Ridge, there's courts.
Highland Ridge, right. That's it. You know, obviously, that's not enough to, to, for this, for this city here. So we, we need to have it someplace else here, because I've, I've heard people say that they have to wait, especially in season. And, and why should that be? So I just wanted to, to let the, the commissioner know my, my feelings about that. So that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Price Boulevard seems to be the big topic of discussion. So while I understand March of '22 is too soon to put a possible referendum, I get it. We have an election coming up in August, which is for a, the primary. And we could, that is eight months away. And we could put a referendum on there, which is completely separate from the Surtax and use the August election. That way then we don't have the costs incurred for holding a special election, which can be upwards of $80,000 in itself. I, I really would like to see a bigger conversation. I think I've heard every single one of us today talk about Price Boulevard and how are we going to get this funded? This is not a new conversation. We have been talking about this for years. And if it's going to go to a referendum for a possible bond, we need to get the specifics of that. We need to have a conversation when we would like that. And I really think it's time that we have an agenda item to have this larger conversation sooner, rather than continuing to wait and kicking this can down the road. I've heard from all of the commissioners, this is a high priority. The accident on 75 just really brought it back home again. I understand that we want to wait until after the Surtax vote so it doesn't co-mingle possible problems. I get that. But we have to find another way to skin this cap. So speaking about Price Boulevard, I would also, because this Surtax stuff is 15 years from now, I do not want future commissions to be in the exact same predicament that we are in now trying to fund widening Price Boulevard in phases. East of, east of Toledo Blade is going to be the next monkey on our back of Price Boulevard. And if we don't start planning for that now, we are not, we are not being good stewards. And I really think we need to have something in Surtax for the funding for east of Toledo Blade, because we're going to have the Activity Center Six coming in. We're going to possibly having a new interchange within 15 years. We have the widening of Rain Tree. Price Boulevard is how you get to Rain Tree from, from the central part of Northport. So I would really like to see something in here to start planning for widening of Price Boulevard east of 75, uh, east of Toledo Blade. It's not in here now. And I have been saying it all along, we need to start talking about that now instead of 15 years from now, because that's where we are today.
Okay, with that said, Commissioner McDowell, city manager had his light on.
Thank you.
I guess two clarifications. One, it is in here now. We, we, we put it in, so we would not have it not in here at all.
I'm sorry, what number is it? Because I don't see east of Toledo Blade for Price Boulevard. I see west for Heron Creek area. I don't see east.
The one that we have in here, remind me where, which one, I think it was 40, 42?
Phase two is from.
Right.
From Sumter to the high school.
Right. So what I'm saying is, we put a phase in of the widening project as we could within this particular exercise. The actual widening of Price is a project that is larger than staff can sort of figure out. So we are definitely to need you to act, to give the direction of how you want it done. So the agenda item works well for us, because then it sort of puts on us what exactly we can do and what we need to do in order to make it happen. But we can't do that as staff. I mean, it's, it's just too large. And Finance Director Williams just, you know, confirmed or reminded me that the county is the one who did not want us to actually put another item, like a bonding item on the, I thought it was something I thought of, but maybe I didn't, on the election of 2022. It needs to be strictly for the Surtax.
I get it. But we can always use the primary for that.
No, primary is a great idea.
But we're, we have, Phase One is from Sumter to Toledo Blade. Phase Two is from Sumter to the high school-ish, Glen Allen-ish, somewhere along there. But we need to put a Phase Three of Price Boulevard to start planning that, because that is going to be, like I said before, the next monkey on the back of future commissions.
Have we, do we have a price estimate on that anywhere, all part? Any?
But if we add it to this priority list, that's all I'm looking for, is to add it to a priority list, because we're going to have to acquire land, we're going to have to acquire stormwater, we're going to.
We add Phase Three, not knowing the price tag unless Ms. Belia knows it, and she's shaking her head. It's probably not going to be cheap. So it'll just, you know, again, push something.
The whole, the whole stretch of Price Boulevard is about 13 miles, okay? We have been trying and trying and trying to just get this one segment funded. It took a couple of years to acquire the stormwater ponds, as you know, get everything designed and all that. Quite honestly, this number in this book is old, because all the time that is going by now, since the time we had the engineer's cost estimate, now we're at a point where prices are skyrocketing. You can't get materials. Our biggest hurdle has to be, how are we going to fund this first segment? We've gone over it, we've batted it around, we've met with our consultant, our financial consultant, we, we've met with them twice over the past year. Then we had the Surtax four issue and the recommendation of the county. And it makes sense to not have a competition, if you will. The other thing you have to understand is, and I've gone through this, and I know some of the commissioners have also been involved with it, it's basically a three-year process. When you're talking about bonding a large project such as this, it's probably going to be closer to $60 million, okay? You have to educate the public. You have to get with your bond counsel. It's generally a, a three-year process. I know that sounds like a long, long time, but if you want it to be successful, you have to go through the exercise. We pounded the pavement for nearly two years, okay? All of that being said, using the road bond as an example, we had approval rate of slightly over 66%. That's not wonderful. It's good, but it's not wonderful. There's many, many people that want Price Boulevard to be widened, and you're going to have some people that don't. The other thing we have to take into consideration, and I know it'll be part of the larger discussion, and we've talked about this, is there's other larger projects. Do we just want to have this one item on the, on the, on the ballot? Do we want to put others? Do we want to figure out another way to fund Price possibly and maybe preserve those other larger projects for the bond? So these are all things we've been discussing. But unfortunately, we're at, we're at a standstill here. The other problem we have is, if we were to fund it, let's just say, that would eat up all of our Surtax money. So we keep getting back to the bonding is probably going to be the best option. But we, we, we had several meetings on it. We talked for a great length of time to try to, but it is, it's difficult. And you're right, Commissioner McDowell, it's not just this one segment. That's just this one segment. Now we've got to look at, by the high school, because there is issues there that we've got to resolve. And then, and then, now you've got, hopefully, it'll be in one of the locations, Rain Tree, Yorkshire, a third interchange. That's going to probably generate all sorts of development. We're going to need to widen it out there. So whatever plan we come up with, we're going to have to put it on in the future. But the first order of business is trying to get this $60 million, let's just say, estimated cost resolved. Yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm only suggesting that we put some money in. To get it going. To get Phase Three, east of Toledo Blade. Right. On the Surtax. So that way then we are showing the people, hey, we've learned our lessons from Phase One. We don't want to repeat it for Phase Three. Yes, ma'am. So that's the only thing I was suggesting.
I just want to step on that for a second, too, while you're up here, Julie.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand the concerns between the county and Surtax and, and just wanting to leave it alone and going for that. But what, what they need to realize is, that's a county-wide vote. This is a city issue.
Yes.
And, and this is for our city voters to go ahead and either take a hold of and take ownership of getting the road done or bypassing it by not going through the referendum for a bond. Then they'll have to say, well, then we got to come up with the money. And if, let's just say it failed on referendum, well, they better be voting yes for Surtax. So I'm just saying it's, it, I, I, I think it is a good idea to have it, you know, earlier in August for the primaries and then have a second for Surtax. And you got two different educational processes going on. But again, larger conversation, let's get, let's get an agenda item on and maybe just make the meeting just about Price Boulevard, get our citizens in here, let's hear from them, let's have an evening meeting.
Absolutely.
To where people can participate and let's just chat about it.
Yes, sir.
You know, you know, at the beginning of the year, it's time to start looking forward to it. That's all. That's all.
Absolutely.
And, and I appreciate everything y'all do. Y'all got some numbers, we know they got to be tweaked. You know, it has been quite a few years, so yeah, inflation and demand, so.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much. Okay, were you done, Commissioner McDowell?
I am, thank you very much.
Commissioner Langdon, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions regarding the widening of Rain Tree Boulevard? Does the $31 million encompass 100% of that project of widening and improving Rain Tree?
Which number is it?
It's page 52 of the original submission.
It's, it's, yes, it is all the money that we have allocated towards that project. If that number were to change, it would be in addition to what you're seeing there. But the $31 million is the total amount.
I, I guess what I'm poking at is placing the interchange at Rain Tree. The, the really compelling need for that is to alleviate traffic on King's Highway. So why are we not going to Charlotte County for them to contribute their fair share to that project?
Your question?
Yeah, I think we need an interlocal for this. Okay, I'll keep going. Tropicare pedestrian and bicycle shared use path. Do, do we have an expectation or desire to make the estates a walkable community? Is, is that the intention of the estates? Is that what the people want?
I'm not sure. Vice Mayor, we have that answer today?
Or it, it, do we have a safety issue on Tropicare? Have children been injured going to school or riding their bikes or?
A couple of years ago, the former commissioners had requested that this be an item that be placed on there because they'd received some complaints from parents that children were walking in the dark. There were no sidewalks, bike paths, so forth, to safely maneuver to bus stops. There was, you know, the traffic. And we even had the police department do additional traffic enforcement because there was complaints of speeding on Tropicare Boulevard. So that is what had this item formed into a project.
Okay.
The parents, you know, talking with former commissioners about this issue.
So the design of this shared use path, is it still part of the design that this would also be appropriate for horse riding? I think a couple of years ago, we had a very animated meeting here in chambers-
Yes, ma'am.
-talking about it. And there was, this room was full. And I'd have to say about 95% of the people really did not want, did not see the value of that very wide sophisticated multi-use path that would also embrace horses and all kinds of use, so.
Oh, and some, some of the experts there said that the path was usable for horses, but then they were conflicted by other experts that said it wasn't good for horses because of the material.
Changed all of the project from, we, we, the CIP sheet has certain areas, is this wide certain areas or that wide certain areas or asphalt certain area. It, so the CIP sheet, if my memory serves me correct, is current and updated that we approved and I don't think there's any funding for it.
No.
I think all the funding-
We used all that funding for resurfacing Tropicare because that came in so high over budget because of the cost of materials. But the CIP project is not funded now? And it, it is showing what the plan is.
So, so after that meeting, what we did was we, we critiqued the attendees and the comments. And a lot of the people that had come to the meeting did not actually reside in Northport. There was only a small percentage. And the small percentage that did attend from Northport, they didn't want some type of a path. And then we had a few people, some people that did not want. But what we did was we tried to, as Commissioner McDowell says, we did some redesigning work and made it more affordable-
Okay.
-regard to sidewalks and so forth.
Okay.
So if memory serves me correctly-
I think that's what I was getting at, because I had that memory of a very expensive-
Yes, and we scaled it way down. We scaled it way down.
Okay, good, I'm done with my question, thank you very much.
Were you still up again, Commissioner White, or did they just not take your name off? Okay, Commissioner Luke, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about Tropicare also myself. To me, the only reason that there's a sidewalk or a path going along Tropicare is because it's an arterial connector type road. And within our comp plan and things, those types of streets have that amenity. Now, the estates are totally to be rural. So you're not going to have sidewalks going down those side roads. You're not going to have, you know, the amenities that you would hear. There's no water, there's no sewer that's going to go back into the estates. But to my recollection, the only reason that that was talked about was because of it being the arterial connector and the parents having a lot of stress over the children having to wait out there for the buses. It is a topic that's going to have to be really talked about, you know, further. Because if you put a path along some of the driveways coming out, that, that becomes a hazard, too. So it's another topic that's going to be long-winded later when we look at it. Thank you.
All right, I have no more lights up for questions. City clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
And none in here?
Before we adjourn, do we need to give, I've got a couple of notes that we need to, I think, give-
I was just getting to that part.
Well, you called for public comment and I was, thought you were going to adjourn right away.
No, because now I need to request a motion. If we, that's what I was just going to ask the city manager. Do you need direction going forward to our second meeting on, on everything that we've discussed here today? I think everybody's got a grasp on that.
I believe we had it, and I don't believe we need any further direction.
There wasn't very many major changes, but just adding the, the little few ideas that we wanted to do and then coming back with some agenda items in the future on meetings that we wish to discuss further, which is separate than the second meeting, but-
Correct.
So you're good with all that?
We're good.
All right. Now, is there any public comment? Okay, see, there was three public comments today. And let's see, it's 10:23 and this meeting is adjourned. See you next time.